We're shortly on the 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the Eastern Great Township's December Board of Supervision Meeting to order. As always, we'll begin by pledging to our flag. The present lead is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the right of us is the nation's hands. One nation under God, individual with their rights and justice for all. We had this board met at 6 o'clock. We just got through a executive meeting in which we discussed personnel. That is, management performance evaluation as well as appointments for next year. That is, that we made in January. You all have an agenda. I'd like to announce we have a few basic rules. I think most of you have heard them before. If you wish to address the board, and there are two sessions in order to do that. Once we get in the meeting, once we get out of the meeting, come up and give us your full name and address and speak into the microphone. Also, I'd like to announce the meeting is being videoed and then we'll put it on the township website as soon as possible. And thank you all for coming. I will begin up here by introducing ourselves to our public.
I'm Bill Cox.
I'm Solomon Art Rutledge.
Jeff Rowan.
And we're joined by Wendy Brown, our secretary, White Slistner, Tim Buck, and Todd Zinkler, our manager. And this gentleman back there that's smiling right now, Stan Walters. He's our emergency management coordinator. And he always has a smile on his face. Some of us present that. I mean, they at least are happy. But thanks for your presence here tonight, Stan. Now, first item to take a vote will be the approval of the minutes from our November 2 meeting. Todd, I think there was maybe a minor change or something to that?
I handed it out to you.
Who you have it here?
Page 3 of 7.
Wait, wait, wait.
Page 3 of 7 to 4 of 7. I have them in red text.
So we'll approve the minutes with that change. You'll have it in front of you. You can all go ahead and take a look at it. Anybody else have any comments on the minutes before we adopt them? Seeing none. I'll call for the vote. I'll leave the motion to the second.
Just a house second.
All right, call for favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next item will be the township report for November last of this year. Before initiating the motion to the second, any questions or comments on the township report?
Just one quick one. I assume the thing from Grove Sporting's good, Todd, was for the Winchester Park?
Correct.
Or the best?
Yes. I commented, Todd, the park was really good over there.
It was doing well.
Attention to detail. Everything was done very well. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the township's report?
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for favor.
Aye.
Aye. All ayes. Next item is public comment. If anyone wants to address the board on any subject, you're welcome to come up. Seeing none. Nobody with their hand up will move on. Under orders is in resolutions. We have resolution number 216-16. Todd, you want to brief us on that, please?
Yeah, what this does is it sets the general real estate tax rate for 2017, which would remain unchanged at 0.74 mils. And also the fire protection tax, which would also remain unchanged at .34 mils. And we need to implement this before we approve the budget.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make your motion.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just for information sake, how long has it been that the .74 cents has remained unchanged? You don't want to be offended?
I don't know. That's been a long time.
It's been a few years.
Yeah.
Our real estate taxes haven't risen for years. Right now, the township is earning or regaling $42,000 in real estate taxes a year, which is real, all things considered.
Yeah, on the average, well, I don't say the average house. If you have a home assessed at $200,000, you're paying $14.01 in general real estate taxes in the township. Now, we have the separate fire taxes, you know, but that goes directly to the fire companies. Now, that was increased two years ago.
At the request of the Eastern Great Fire Department. There aren't as many volunteers as there used to get, so we need to support them. Otherwise, we're going to be faced with a huge bill. We have to have our own public fire department or departments. Okay, moving on. Who we got approved of the rates? Thank you.
I think we need a second.
Well, we have a motion. Is there a second to approve the two rates?
A second.
Need further discussion? Call for favor.
Aye.
Aye. We have an ordinance, number 2017-01, Armstrong Cable TV Franchise Agreement Renewal. Todd, you want to brief us on that?
Yeah, the current franchise agreement with Armstrong, which serves a small portion on the east side of 83 in the township expires the end of this month. What you have before you is a franchise agreement that's been proposed by Armstrong, and it's pretty much the same format as the one we did two, three years ago with Comcast. There are a couple of changes. There's changes where you see the strike throughs, the strike outs, where things that are no longer required on their F and C regs. This is for a 10-year renewal. And what we would need from the board, if you're okay with it, when we move forward, just need you to see that authorize advertisement of an ordinance for January, which would authorize execution of this agreement.
Section 34 where it talks about the audits. Did I notice it? I didn't notice anything about who pays the audit costs, assuming that there's a problem. Is that something we should have in there to turn it off?
That would be, if we requested the audit, we would pay those fees.
Regardless of whether they were right or wrong.
Now, Tren Buck, you have, on behalf, reviewed this document?
I have. Todd and I had some back and forth on some specific issues. And largely, we wanted this agreement to mimic the Comcast agreement. Because it's part of our agreements with cable users that we won't make the one thing more favorable than the other.
That's good.
So you're...
I believe that it meets this, and I'm satisfied with the ordinance the way it is.
The biggest change is that they no longer have the requirement, if we wanted, to provide, like, a government educational channel or to provide the township with one free. But we don't use any of that now with them, right?
Not with Armstrong.
Right, so you don't have the free...
And there's nothing that I'm aware of in that area. I don't foresee anything new, new government buildings or anything over there.
They're not mandated by the state to provide that service anymore. And I'm assuming that's why it's no longer in that document.
It's an error issue.
But doesn't mean we couldn't negotiate for it if we felt we wanted. But there's such a small piece of...
Would it be something that we need from an emergency management perspective? No.
Okay. And not having a performance bond, that's not an issue, you don't think? That's the other thing that removes their requirement for a performance bond.
I suggested to Todd that it's probably not a large issue, right? And then if they were willing to shorten, I think they have requested a, what, 15-year term?
15 years.
Well, I said, I think it'd be a good trade-off if they, if they don't want this, the bond issue, then let's shorten the term to 10 years.
Okay.
And they agreed to that.
That's good.
Quickly. So maybe that was the wrong deal, because they agreed to it so quickly, which you can never tell. I'm satisfied with the agreement the way that it is.
Need further questions? We go into the subsequent agreement. Well, I'm taking a motion to approve the agreement as drafted. I'll second it. For the discussion, call for favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll advertise an ordinance for its execution.
Thank you. Yeah, Phil.
We've had a real problem with them as far as getting any service over on that side of the highway. I'm a, Todd, you were going to look into that. I don't think it's been resolved.
Now, I have, under the current agreement, as well as a new one, you need to have 20, potentially 20 hookups within one mile distance to make it economically feasible for them to throw them online.
Problem is, it's a commercial area, and it's hard to get 20 commercial users there. I know that on Caprice Court, we actually gave cable in for them on the Court's Body Shop and the car rental and the Jiffy Lube and everyone, and they just won't service it.
And we had looked into that before, and they would consider running it, but they're going to want some cash upfront from those folks, and I don't know what that cost.
And we, well, that one, we actually ran the cable for them, so I'm not sure why it's a problem to make that connection. And I know we're in the Commerce Center when the engineering company moved in here a couple of years ago. We did contribute, paid to get service that we could absolutely needed. They need to add cable for their engineering business. It hasn't been easy, and I understand what they're saying, but that's easy if it's a residential area, but if it's commercial, it's tough to get to that 20 number.
What other numbers do we have?
I don't think, I don't think we have any. And again, like, from Elm Drive in that area over to Caprice Court, it was a pretty long run with no connections.
Right.
So we don't think that 20 number would be negotiable, meaning that enforced with them?
Well, that's, of course, we can always try and negotiate, but that's the same number that we have in Comcast. And we did do a lot of negotiation with them. We try and keep them parallel.
Yeah, I just think that we could add something about 10 commercial properties or something as opposed to a strict 20 residential properties.
Even if it was 10, in this particular case, I think it's still going to be a problem because that's the Kiwi Farm separating, which is too tall, and they had a pretty long run just to get to Caprice Court.
Caprice Court, they're actually across the street, Cracker there, although they, I don't know why they won't, they are in that development. They're there. I know they service some...
Are you sure that's Armstrong?
Hmm?
Are you sure Armstrong's there?
Absolutely. It's Armstrong. They service that.
Yeah, you, you're in Oakbrook's there.
Well, I was there, and that's who we had.
Okay.
I'll call, I'll give them a call, maybe, since they never looking at this week.
It's right across the road.
Yeah.
We did install the cable. I made contact, and we wanted to do it. We buried the cable.
No, I had several conversations with them. They came out, did an engineering study, and they came back with these costs and, so, but I'll follow up.
With her, thank you.
Thank you.
Under subject to management on the White Cell property on Tonah and non-areas, this report is for a final plan to rule. Todd, you want to, focus on this? We've been through this number 10 before or something.
Yeah, this is, we're getting very close to getting this wrapped up. I gave you a copy of the outstanding items, and it was just a few, just proof of sewer capacity, which we'll have when they pay for the sewer EUs. And if you recall, when the board made that approval to sell them for, they have to buy them by the end of the year, and they are there in that. All fees need to be paid. We need to get the estimate security for public improvements, which we just actually received today and forward that to the engineer, our engineer, for review. And then the private road maintenance agreement, stolen water O and M agreement, need to be submitted to the township. So we're moving along there pretty well. So the three months are up since last approval, so we're just asking for a reapproval, which would be good for three months.
So we're going to reapprove the final plan?
Correct.
With these contingencies?
Yes, with the outstanding contingencies.
Before we reapprove plans finally, and then subject to these contingencies being met?
Correct.
So we're not, they're going to come back again, they're going to come back for us again, then?
No, no, because we've already approved this plan prior. It's just because the 90-day time period where we have to record it with the recorder needs, if the date's older than that, they won't record it, so we need a new approval date.
We still need a new approval date, and so will we need a motion?
I'll make the motion if we reapprove the White Cell plan.
Subject to the petitions?
Correct.
Stated, or as stated?
As stated, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? Call for favor?
Aye.
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 Next item will be reports. We'll begin with our manager's report.
Just a few items to call to your attention. The EMA Intergovernmental Agreement Committee met in November, and during that meeting, as I have noted, Stan Walters, who is our emergency management coordinator, brought to my attention that elected officials are supposed to have their certification in the IS 100 and IS 700, or the Federal Emergency Management. Those are courses, I believe I attached information. If anyone needs any help, let me know, but they're online courses. They're not difficult, and you do the exam online as well. The other thing, excuse me, just to bring you up to date, zoning officer Keith Hunnings and I met with the owner of the Glenbrook Mobile Home Park yesterday morning on site. We walked the property. We compiled a list of violations. We're actually going to be sending violation notices to each specific lot leasing, as well as the property owner, because beyond the lots that he leases, he also has some, or the common areas, I'll call them. So he seemed very agreeable, and he seems willing to work with us to get things cleaned up, so I'm cautiously optimistic, and I feel we're heading in the right direction. He seems to be very cooperative, so...
That's good. Now, do we still have the fines outstanding?
Yes.
And they have to be paid? Is there, he gets no relief from his fines?
Not that I'm aware of. And they total $13,500.
He inherited the problems in some degree.
Yes, yeah. And when I refer to him as the owner, the property hasn't actually been transferred to his name yet at this point. He inherited the money from, or the money, the property from his mother, who passed away approximately two years ago. So he's trying to get things cleaned up. I'm thinking, I believe he's around 22 years old, so he had a lot thrown into his lap at age 20.
It'd be constructive to give him the money, and just talking theoretically here, as providing the uses to clean up the site.
Well, he talked to me about, you know, if the fines could be reduced, and I told him, the first thing I need to do is talk to the judge and see if they can be, but I said, we're going to need to see some cooperation from you first.
And what about concerns that the neighbors have, those cars that are actively being snitched from fires?
I asked him about that, and I saw the area where that car was sitting. I visibly, and he, we didn't see any signs of oil or anything. What he explained to us was, he had someone coming in to take that car away, and they had to take the roof off. He's saying these John Tollers for cars would probably have the roof off, and I guess they used their backhoe to rip it off or whatever. I don't know, but that's his version.
Well, the $13,000 we paid goes to township.
Correct.
Goes into the general fund.
Correct.
So I don't know, would it be a good idea not to say, okay, we'll give you some or all?
Well, I told him, the first thing is, I would need to talk to the judge, see if he could even happen, and the board would need to authorize that, that I don't have that authority to reduce it.
Of course, you want to. But I'm just throwing that out as a possibility.
Right.
And if he doesn't make it in the job and spends a lot of money cleaning that up, I wouldn't be averse to hearing something. Okay.
Tim's about ready to say something.
I don't disagree with any that you said, right? But the judge is sort of out of it, right? We have pressed the fine against him, and we have a judgment. It's not priority, right? So it doesn't jump to the front of the line, right? But there's no equity in that property. It's not like we can come down, you know? We can press a lien against the property, but we are an unsecured, non-priority lien. We're behind the mortgage, which, in my opinion, probably soaks up all the value of the property. So if he wants to pay us, that's great. If threatening him with the, as you have, with the potential of a claim is enough to add a lien to the property, that's perfect. But I think they're going to receive $13,000 or $13,000 out of it. We'll see.
That understood. Thank you.
And just for the record, I think the solicitor reported last month that the real estate taxes, the liens for 2014 and 2015, those have all been paid in full. So those have all been cleared.
Taxed, yes.
But not 2016.
He told me he repaid 16.
So he's paid the mortgage, and some of the property is going into foreclosure. He's paid the taxes.
Right, but not the mortgage. So the bank could still be pursuing.
The bank, my, Art, as of last month, the bank is seeking to foreclose on the property. That's an iceberg process, but a year from now, they may be the owners of the properties that...
And that may have been paid up as well, because these taxes were paid just within the last four to six weeks. So that may be, I don't know.
We're making progress. I have the excellent Habitat improvement grant, and that includes a Thompson, 175 native plants, lovely trees, basically. That exit four, 10 orders of Deer Creek. And I believe the Conservation District had volunteers come down and assist with that work.
That is correct.
And I was there, I shouted a thank you, they were down in the middle of the stream working, and I was wondering if we could send them a letter for their, thanking them for their volunteer work.
I did send them an email, eye contact coordinator, and I did express our gratitude. They asked if she would pass it on to her volunteers.
Oh, that's wonderful. And Andy Bobby is our volunteer for our parks, and he schedules all the athletic events for youth leagues, and he does it for no cost to us. Should we send our Adam on the subject, provide a letter? Should we send him a nice letter thanking him on behalf of the board? The board would agree with that? All right, what else do we have there, Todd?
Everything we don't really need to discuss is at this point, but the board previously had asked for some information on Forest Lakes and the cost to resurface those roads. If you want to look over this, if you have any questions or want to talk about this stuff, that's fine.
Thank you.
The, see what else I have here. I did get the information from the York County SPCA. I took this information from the report.
Thank you for that.
The Verizon cell tower on Miller Park Drive, just want to update you on that. They were down and did all their tree plantings. They have one or two trees that they still need to plant, and they just planted it at a random place for right now. They need to wait for the YNC to pull their storage shed forward, and then they'll come back in the spring and plant those in the appropriate place.
They planted large trees, too, so there's good-sized trees.
And the other thing they told me, I did not ask for it to be done, but they're going to come back and negate, they're going to put the green slats.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, so...
This is the, this is the cell tower at the end of Miller Park Drive, if we go into our park. It's really a very rare-looking out. The landscape is pretty much just buffers, that cyclone fence and so forth, and it's done at no cost to the township, for their obligation to follow up on what they are obligated to do. You talked about the SPCA, and through September, the cost per animal is $73.27. Yeah, that's a lot of money there. We give them about $300 a year.
Yeah, around $32, $33.
Yeah, $32.25 is on our budget.
I don't know. Is it worth it, I mean?
Do we need to save 20 animals, which I don't think we have in there, Sam?
Who's that?
Uh, not more than...
Small number, I'm not sure where it is right now.
Just be aware that's what they... What else to move on? Any comments on the basic thoughts?
Todd, could you add to that, the Elm Drive issue, or you're still waiting to hear from back from the state, I guess?
Or county, one of the two?
Or was it the county?
Oh, are you talking about...
Elm Drive extension.
Yeah, the extension.
About the realignment? I have not got the response back.
Could you add that to your report there, just so we don't lose...
We didn't follow it. To not follow it around, that's taken on. There's a concept, in fact, it's part of our, part of our planning work, to extend Elm Drive from 851, where East Sports Avenue, over across Tonah, continue on to the southeast, and come out on Windy Hill Road. And that, right now, there's a gap in there, so there's a dead end where Elm Drive dead ends, works as to Windy Hill Road. It's not a very long area, but we don't want a lot of truck gap beginning necessarily, but it would take some pressure off some of the other roads.
So just, if I could, do you have quick items? I forwarded an email to you that I received from Stan Walters, and I told him I didn't foresee any issue, but just want to make sure it was okay with the board, that the React team uses the EOC bring it forward. Just want to make sure that it was okay.
That's fine. That's good news.
Last thing is, I do not have a November board meeting online yet, if anyone looked. I need to run that again, because I know our meeting was just a little over two hours, but when we go to, when I go to upload it, it's saying it takes five hours, that meeting, and I know that's not the case, so I am aware that it's not up, but we will get it up here shortly.
So you got us on slow motion.
I checked that, and you're not.
That's what I had. Thought we were slow enough already.
I want to ask the township about this testing to take. We're not inclined to take tests. I have taken tests for 60, 70 years. I mean, do I need, do I get a tutor, or can I get, well, hey, whatever costs?
You haven't even looked at it, man. It wouldn't have been that bad. She intimidated.
Stan Walters, Trindberg Borough, near EFC, yes, it's an online class. It takes a couple of hours. You do it at your own pace, and at the end is a 35-question multiple choice, and if you print, if you print out the instruction materials open book, it's an honor system. But if you need some tutoring, I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Anyway, do you have exempted for this, the president? Senility?
I don't know. I don't know about this. It's just a recommendation on my part, but what it affects is, if we have a case where we are trying to secure FEMA grant funding or FEMA compensation for a major disaster, they could look at to see whether you all have taken it.
It sounds like it's important, then, doesn't it?
It is important. And you're not, you're not learning highly technical things, and I'd be willing to bet you to probably look at, you know, you can print out the test before you take it. So you can mark the answers while you're taking class, but it's to give all of you an awareness...
Open book exam.
Yes, it's to give all of you an awareness of what your various response agencies, how their lingo, how they talk, what... their lingo, how they talk, what, what is an incident? What is an incident commander? You just kind of learn some of the terms and how all that works. And that's an important thing. You, you are responsible for the public safety of everybody in the township. You delegate that to me, but you're still responsible, so.
I don't think so, I think you're responsible. But you made your points very well, thank you. Let's move on. Solicitor's report. Turn it off.
I did submit a report this month, and the only thing that we really talked a lot about in our last meeting was potential technical ordinance. I'm not ready, really, I'm not ready yet to present to you what I found, although I've reviewed a lot of materials. It's okay, I'll come back to you in January and show you.
That's fine. Making progress.
If you want to bring that up, that might be appropriate. Todd mentioned something else that I already found out about this week. So the Pennsylvania Act that was adopted, enacted by the legislature just two weeks ago, Act 172 of this year. And what it does is, it authorizes a municipality to grant to volunteer emergency service people that live in the community, a discount on their real estate taxes. As a reward or an impetus for them to volunteer with the fire company or with the MS. Up to a maximum of twenty percent of the real estate tax that you pay to the township.
Not school taxes?
Not the school taxes, they don't let you touch the school taxes, but the county taxes. So probably a small amount, but something. And I anticipate that every fire company is going to be aware of this, and they're going to be coming to you and suggesting that you should adopt an ordinance that allows them. There may be some, some, that should help us to cultivate volunteers, so.
There, there is definitely a lot here. That'd be about two or three dollars.
That's part of the problem, right? But...
All right, well, we can participate nonetheless.
You have a copy of the design officer's report? Design officer, color force, that's a sewage report officer, all one person report, in your packet, along with the maintenance report. Yes, that's preserved. On the, do you have any idea where, in the Commons, the mattress firm was, what aside or what kind of sign?
Mattress firm was, they bought out Sleepies, which is next to Rita's.
Yes.
Right there by McDonald's. So they're just replacing the store for the sign.
So it's a big sign, something like that.
There was some material, cloth or vinyl material sign ball on that cyclone fence up there, I can see it. Can they do that? I'll check with Keith on that.
Where are they?
They're hung on the cyclone fence, up on top of this photo, they, they're based on a wall, but you can see it from A-51, unless there's a problem. Art had one other question. You had a question about the above ground pool, the variance?
Yeah, I was curious about whether, does it have the pool after it's put in there?
Well, acting on a complaint that we received, there was a swimming pool that was installed, and it did not, they did not receive a permit, they did not apply for a permit. Keith went out, they did an inspection, it is in violation because it sits within the setbacks that are required. So it's installed, so the property is going to apply for a variance, see if it can receive relief, so.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Engineer's report is in your packet, by half a page. Any questions or comments, to address at the bottom of the Garden Act?
Pedro, I have one quick question. So if we're going to bid on the mound area paving work next month, do we see that before? Do we need to see that before, or?
Typically, I mean, if you want to see it, I'll certainly get a copy to you, but the bid manual is probably two, two and a half inches thick, because it's just full of a lot of legal jargon. I can make sure you get it.
I didn't know if we needed to know anything about the project itself, or maybe have any kind of involvement in that sense before it goes out to bid, that was my only, but I guess not, because we bid it out last year.
Yeah, we bid it out last year. And that'll actually be only a January agenda for the board to authorize that to go out for bid in January.
Just quickly back to Todd's report, because it came up last time. We should note that the accumulation of unlawful litter and rubbish on Elm Road that I did drive by has been cleaned, looks nice, so I think we should say thanks to the property or, because it wasn't his fault that it was there, but it did, it did clean it up. Again.
Also, we do have more, must have more than our share of litter, but, you know, it doesn't, it detracts from fox and daisies and all of life. And there is some litter at Messina Highlands, right off of the side, we saw it off the entrance, there's a bunch of litter there. Is that in the vegetated area? That's actually Kinsley's, so I can make them aware of that.
Yeah, we got to clean it up once, not too old, I think.
Yeah. Kinsley as well as Tom's Markets, we usually have to send them a letter once or twice a year, if it wears up on the hillside.
Walmart.
Walmart down below, the storm management facility, south of Walmart, stuff flows down through there. The next report to clean it up, I mean, so, I think the more we persist, the less likely they are to continue. Sensible, all right, moving on. You have, you have a copy of the planning commissions? Yes, in your packet, I think we didn't make, they did meet last month, did they? All right, keep it on. Okay, they did meet. New business. Oh, so supervisor comments, excuse me. Anybody want to, to testify for that, to each other, or? Billy, man?
Uh, nothing tonight, though.
Anybody else?
Yeah. In here at Sycel, you know, we got to put the guardrail, because they removed the old trees on the back and everything. You know, I'm understanding that they may be continuing to take out the rest of the way. You know, anything? I'd heard of the trees. Sounds like they're taking more out, like they might take it all the way to the end.
What's the purpose of them taking it out, do you know?
I don't know, but I know the, there's a neighbor that's rather disturbed because of all the dust that blows across there since the trees have been removed, and the additional noise since the trees have been moved. And I can see his point. And I was wondering if maybe we shouldn't look at over in this and see if there's anything we can't do. We've got a cut commercial property like this, and it's got a barrier, a buffer, if we don't keep it there. Because we do make them put new buffers in.
Exactly. It's not retroactive. It's an old story, isn't it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's like it was a buffer, I mean, it wasn't intended as a buffer, but it served as a buffer. We make our new businesses put buffers in. Here we're allowing someone in a pre-existing, take it out.
There's some pretty mature trees in there, I mean, does it come under the law, or any?
Well, there's two, I think there's, not a string, there are two approaches that we could at least take, or two issues we can look into. One is, they both fall under the critical environmental area, particularly when you start getting down there toward the end. You know, they may be within a hundred feet of the stream.
But even slope is...
But even slope is the other thing I'm thinking about. So Keith, Keith is off the rest of the week for a medical issue, but I'll make a phone call tomorrow, because I also need to talk to him. Take a notice closer down to Walker Road, it appears to be a, I'm seeing gravel, a dirt driveway that's kind of...
It's getting rough.
Coming out of nowhere, and I know, at least by personal observation, we need to get any calls on it, but when it's wet, they're dragging a lot of mud out on the road, and they've never applied for a driveway.
Is this part of the same landscaping term?
Yes. Did you call him? Yeah, I'll call him tomorrow.
And another thing that was brought to my attention about the property, you know they got a composting pot down there? And apparently during the summer, when some of the rainy months were, or when we get some rains, it was a lot of stagnant water in those compost pots. And a person noticed the noticeable amount of extra mosquitoes around. Now, he said he went down and talked to them, they did something with it at the time, but maybe, I don't know if there's anything we can do.
Yeah, I'll talk to Keith about that one. The other one, I'll call then, because I don't want to wait until he comes back next week.
Yeah, don't worry. I mean, the slope issue, I don't, I don't call exactly fine, but if it's over, what's the slope? Can you apply that?
Was it twenty?
New margins to?
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Can you apply that?
Twenty-five percent, man. It goes down.
I guess not last week, and you're just now. I think if somebody damages a stream, even though, and their farmer's been there for a long time, you can't, you can't harvest trees in fifteen feet of a bank of the stream, take a, break the bank. And that's not retroactive. That applies in any situation. I think the slope might as well, but we need a little opinion, maybe, I don't know, but you can always consult with Tim on this.
I was going to say, let me, I'll call him tomorrow and see where we go with that, if we have some resistance on him.
But there may have to be vegetation or be forest, that bank.
I need to look, but I believe they did plant new trees on that hillside.
I don't know why they took them down again, but.
I understand the neighbor, because he had a nice buffer, you know, for noise, aesthetics, the whole line.
Jeff, you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay, I just, I'm not sure, like I said, he indicated, it appears he's taking, I don't know if he's taking any more down or not for sure, but maybe Todd wants to even take a look, see if he had, I haven't been down by, I don't know what was removed or anything. You've been down there, and then because of that, the guardrail. So, I don't know for sure. He was talking to me about it the other night.
Okay, then we'll move on, on the, on the old business. I have two items, if I could please, we'll... I found some good information Anna had asked about it, one of the meetings regarding traffic studies. If anyone else wants a copy, I'll make one, I didn't want to run all that paper off everyone who isn't interested. There's a copy for you, Anna. But this was put out by LTAC, and explains the process, it was one of their training programs, and it explains where the state law is that requires traffic studies and so forth. So if anyone else wants a copy, I'll gladly see that you receive one.
Okay, really not.
I know anyone to ask about it, and I...
Anna can give us this in a while next month.
A quiz, Anna, I don't know.
Anna presentation.
Oh, my goodness.
The other, I have my, I have the whole business. Anna also asked, I believe it was in September, when we did the 2017 municipal, minimum municipal obligation for the pension. Anna asked a question, had a summary of all the employees, and stated we had ten active on our pension plan, and that we have two retirees, and under vested, it had zero. So I called PMRS. They explained to me that being vested, even though our plan, I believe, is six years, you don't become automatically vested. You're eligible. What happened, she said, for example, if we have an employee that's, you know, forty years old, and they've been here for ten years, when they leave, they submit the application to become vested. So as long as you're an active employee, you're not vested until either you retire or you leave. So just do that, so.
Does everyone know that?
We do, yeah, I was going to say.
It might be worth, uh, two in the employee.
Because we actually have, we do have one employee that is no longer with us, that is eligible to be vested. So I know something, me myself, so I'll get in contact with that employee.
Should be able to handle it or something, I would think, so the folks.
Yeah.
On our own business, I have a comment on, I see we have a plan status report dated November thirtieth of this year. And we talked about the, the, I think, I was right? Iger Farm?
Iger, yeah.
That's, that's this old subdivision plan that, most of that farm is in Shrewsbury Borough, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to be developed as a desert. There's a small part of the property, I'm not saying it, so, it's in the township, and when they first came in to get that double plan approved, they, they were developing a number of lots in, in that area that's in the township. And it's no agriculture, and they couldn't develop it. And then they were going to put a stormwater management facility in there, got a call. And we said, no, this is part of the development, this is an extension of the subdivision, basically, so you can't do that. And last month, there was a question came up about, can we put a wildlife preserve slash reference in there, or the, it also serves as a major stormwater management facility, and there'll be meta improvements in there. Now, this is, it's like there's a fine line here. Unless we see the actual minutes. Have any plans to submit for that?
That will, at this point in time, that is on the January staff review agenda, so we'll be seeing something important, yeah.
I just want to give a little bit of history there. I can tell you that Shrewsbury Borough has received drawings of what that's going to look like.
I'll check to see if we have a P and A, we do actually mail, okay?
No, yeah, I can, I can bring up David more, but I think your ordinance has changed, and you can't have stormwater in that, it's going to have more of a number. So I don't think that's the same as it was. I think that's, the proposal was, as part of that facility, there is going to be about eleven acres of meta. That plan is in, it's going to be a wall at DEP, we were at DEP on Monday this week. It requires an individual permit, which is a little more complicated than a normal MPDS permit. We had a meeting with Nathan Crawford, who used to have it regulating in DEP, to review everything that they want to see from that standpoint. It'll probably be a few months before that's submitted to them. And we were on the agenda for staff this month, and Jeff suggested that we go to the borough first, because most of the project is in a borough. So we're going to stay at the borough next month with the subdivision on that one piece, and how that works. But it's also the complete reports being prepared to submit to DEP to get the ENS MPDS permit, which, because it's bumped up into that next level, the individual permit, it's not handled with the county, it's handled with Harrisburg. So it's a lot more complicated than you might think, and the process has started, it's for real, and I think the plan is going to be good at Borough this month, come back here again, staff review here next month. We've shown DEP the meta plan, and all the maintenance and so forth for the meta, how that would be managed, all will be under the HOA, will be required to maintain, and in fact, the theory was to even plant the meta this year, so it has some time to generate before the project's even started. Okay?
I mean, the, so, I'm just, I think we should be careful here, because if they don't have to manage a stormwater manager on the Shrewsbury Borough's part of the property, they don't have more room for lots. And yet, to be fair, if they come in, and this obviously is a wildlife, a modified, well-planned, well-designed wildlife area, it'll persist forever, and storm management, as you may be secondary, but that's my position.
Well, I think that there's been a lot of thought put into that project, first the ponds are wet ponds, and we had a discussion with DEP. It's not just a matter of saying if they're wet, there has to be design on, on how they're built as a wet pond, so they act as a natural wet pond. We understand that, we've had those conversations with DEP. The meta is fenced from, there is a walking path along the side of it, but from there out, it's fenced, and it's really left totally for wildlife. The walking path also gives access to do the once a year mowing and things that have been done in the meta, and maintain the storm work. Your only, the reason isn't... Your only, the reason isn't because of getting more development in Shrewsbury Borough.
Can I say that?
You did, you did.
It's not, it's not.
It's not that at all. It, it, it's about doing, the old plan doesn't meet today's stormwater requirements. The change has been, because they just way it was, it'd be done, they'd be building forty-eight houses. But what's changed is D E P's requirements, infiltration and all those things. And to, to me, it's gonna take a lot more make that happen. The borough's plan is actually recorded. It was approved, bonded and recorded. Those lots are done, it's just how do you handle the stormwater for those and there's gonna be a lot more infiltration down on the site, there's gonna be a lot more design down on the site in the borough. But this is also a hybrid of a way to make that a lot better project and I, I think it's, uh, it's.
I know that's a gift, but I'm a little bit cynical in the sense that I think we want to challenge it a little bit to convince us that that's in fact.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm positive that it's gonna be first class.
Phil, do you, you want to show them anything?
I, I think it's okay, that, that plan is, again, the borough plan has been actually recorded, it shows up as fifty finished lots right now.
We'll do that. Thanks, Dan. We'll do it to staff, maybe.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Phil.
Sure.
Next line is new business. Uh, Todd, budget, he's helping on seventeen by the way, do that for advertising.
We, we actually did advertise it last month, yes. So it has been advertised, it's been available for public inspection on our website as well as here at the township office. Um, nothing's changed since November. You know, it's ready to act on. The only thing I'm gonna kind of throw in here, uh, if you recall, we were approached about this, uh, bridge project. I think Ann brought that up as well last month. Um, and after the packets went out, I received information, uh, from Jason Snyder, who represents North Hopewell Township. And, uh, as you see, and I can, actually I have some copies, they emailed some of those to you.
You did.
Couple, I have a couple.
This is a copy of what you emailed us.
The text, yes, but then attached he has some photos of the projects and explanations of the concept. Uh, there's a couple of things I just want to bring to your attention. Um, I was with the understanding that this grant may be in conflict with our project that only fifty-one. This would actually be from a separate funding source, dirt and gravel grant program. So that's out of the equation. Um, there's a budget here at the end, but the application would be submitted to York County Conservation District under this dirt and gravel grant in the names of both North Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township. They have a list there of what they would provide as far as labor, which is an engineer, who would also serve as the project manager, as well as four township labors. They're requesting two township labors as well as a couple pieces of equipment. And just keep that in mind when you think of their project engineer and four employees and then our two employees. Just keep that in back of mind when I get further down here, it'll make a little more sense to you. But, uh, the next thing is they were asking Shrewsbury Township to hire two summer interns, work convicts for approximately three weeks and maybe one of them will Shrewsbury Township's payroll, which will run up roughly close to five thousand dollars, about forty-seven hundred. Uh, yeah, I said about sharing the equipment, engineering permits will be called a split fifty-fifty cash. So they would be looking at engineering cash from Shrewsbury Township, twenty-five thousand dollars. The engineering services would be, would serve as a cash match for the grant, which is fine. Here's where I have a little bit of a concern for Shrewsbury Township is, of course, anything near the cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars in materials, you know, it makes sense that that would be split equally between Shrewsbury and North Hopewell. Uh, but the thing that, if you look at their last paragraph on page three, before you get into the schedule about the middle of the page, actually the third paragraph down, the last two sentences, that whole paragraph talks about what North Hopewell would provide in labor charges and equipment values. So what they're proposing to do is use FEMA's schedule and, you know, they may use the rate for a backhoe, you know, fifty dollars per hour and, so we would assign that to our equipment, uh, as well as the labor. And what they're stating in here is we would cost out all that in-kind services, labor as well as equipment. And let's, I'm gonna use this as an example, let's say North Hopewell had a hundred thousand dollars in labor and equipment using the FEMA schedule and Shrewsbury Township only had fifty thousand. They're looking for us to split that difference. So if you look at a project manager as well as four employees and most of the equipment, we're gonna be paying a lot more than this twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. I think that's a big unknown. I just want you to be aware of that.
Well, to back up, has Mike looked at this bridge? To concur that it is essential that it be?
It, right now, right now it's a galvanized pipe and the pipe is in bad shape. There's no bottom to the pipe. There's not much, it's rusted and it's worn.
Well, a couple of things I put in the cart before the horse here is, we don't have a grant. And without, without the grant, it's a whole lot more money. And we haven't received anything from North Hopewell. This is just from their engineer. We haven't got anything from the township asking us to do anything, right?
Well, I mean, he opens it up saying that on behalf of the North Hopewell Township supervisor, he is also appointed, this Jason Snyder is also appointed as their, I don't think I have the, the title correct, but something to the effect of, uh, public works director or burden director or something. He's guaranteed two hundred and pounds.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, I just, I just thought that they had secured the grant. I hope that's what he told them at that meeting.
He said verbally, he was told that it would be funded, but there hasn't even been an application submitted. Get this.
What's, what's the bottom line here?
Well, I know we talked about putting something in the budget and if we did something based off of his budget, we're looking at, uh, you know, thirty thousand dollars.
It could be a hundred.
But it could end up being sixty, seventy, eighty, because where, where the big difference is going to be is in this equaling of the, uh, labor and equipment.
Well, now, he devised that. If he was starting from scratch and worked out a different formula, that we don't know what to expect. I mean.
Right, I, I, I just think there's a lot of, I, my, my concern and my advice to the board is you may want to table this, um, and, and try to get some more solid numbers. Because I, I don't foresee it stopping at thirty thousand dollars based on what's outlined in this letter. I, I see it, I honestly see it being at least double that. I see.
Why didn't you do it the way you did it? Why didn't you say, well, share the grant, we'll both provide the same in-kind services? It, it seemed like it's a very model.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't answer that question. I don't know, so.
Well, then, so we don't, we table, we table it until what? I, I don't disagree with you at all if I'm saying, what are we, what are we working towards?
Well, first of all, first, a solid budget figure. And then they come back and say, you know, we provide in-kind services and that's the end of the story. I mean, if.
Yeah, in-kind services, then say, in a way, don't cost us anything, in a way they do, in a way they don't. But to transfer that to cash now really does cost us something.
Right, because what, what he, he's proposing to do is we balance any kind of services. Our in-kind services only has a value of fifty thousand and theirs has a value of a hundred thousand. They're gonna want twenty-five thousand cash.
We'd rather provide more in-kind services than.
As I'm saying.
It, it, it's.
If that needs to be funded.
It doesn't favor us. Do we give Todd the, are okay to go ahead and, uh, do any of these unnecessary?
I mean, I'd like to contact him and, and go over what some concerns are and we need to firm them up.
Why, why don't you put together your own little thoughts as to how do you think the town, just start from scratch almost and say, look, let's just forget this for a time here, let's start from scratch and make it equitable, but all right, the beginning, then you can pour it back to us the next, next month?
Yes.
What were they asking us to do? Does this not really, were they asking us to commit or?
Well, they're, they're asking us to put dollars in our budget. Now, you can put dollars in, if you want to put in twenty-five or thirty thousand, you can do that, but then that's what our budget is.
What, what we have, what we have, whether it's in the budget or not. All right, well, you go ahead and proceed with him and, and, uh,
I mean, we, we think the same approach as we have, I mean, every year you have projects that arise that are not necessarily budgeted in the year, so we can address this later in the year, but.
See, this, 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 this phrase that we've got, North Hopewell, Shrewsbury Township.
Yeah, what, what I, this isn't the greatest graphic, but I tried to show you here, this is Hayne Road, the trail's out here. This is Hayne Road, it make you left onto Lime Road. This is in all of North Hopewell because the stream is the boundary for the two townships. And this little segment here is in Shrewsbury Township, this little red piece. And it's this pipe here. They're both bad, but this one here, I mean, it does, it does need to be replaced.
Okay. You see, it's that question.
You're not on the hook for both of them.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Well, anyway, you get back to us and let us know what.
Yeah, what the alternatives are.
Okay. And, uh, Jason's the engineer here now for a number of years, not all of you for a number of years. Okay.
Now you're making a very good.
My fault, my fault for procrastinating.
I'm picking that up.
Yeah. Anyway, let's move on. Okay.
So, but you can move forward with the budget if you wish.
Okay. So, we're asking for approval.
You asked us to propose it.
As we've seen it a number of times, we've had these and, uh,
I might promote your approval.
What? I'll second it.
Thank you. No question. Why is there a four hundred and forty-six thousand dollar deficit company?
Probably something, you kind of have some public works projects that are.
We, we have, yeah, we have some, uh, major capital improvement projects. Uh, the, the largest one is Mount Airy Road reconstruction. I mean, we do not generate enough revenue to pay for that in one year. So we have that in cash reserves, uh, and budgeted to five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that will run from Forest Avenue down to, um, at least the roundabout and we're gonna put in an add order into bids to resurface it from the roundabout down to River Tracks.
So you're gonna take the money to fund the room project from the?
It'll come from our general fund savings, basically, yes.
Can't be spent for anything else other than roads.
Yeah, where it's a general operation. But just to give you an idea, I just do as quickly as four numbers. We anticipate on January first that we'll have just a little over three million dollars in the bank. We generated two point four million in revenue and expend two point, that's closer to two point nine million, two point eight million in expenditures, which includes that capital project, uh, which will leave us close, closer to two point six million in the bank December thirty-first in cash.
But you're going this way now.
Right.
Anyway, you're fine.
Now, you do little by little over time, but, um, I mean, you get to a point, I can tell you, most municipalities in Pennsylvania, if they have a cash reserve of ten percent of their annual budget, they're very happy. Shrewsbury Township is very fortunate.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
And.
No, but the thing is, I agree with you, but where do you keep building it to? You know, if you want to get five, six, ten million dollars, taxpayers after all start asking, what are you saving all the money for? It's for rainy day projects.
Township is not in debt, uh, at all, which, and, and it has, we, we, we loaned some money out to the sort of project and, uh, other than that, there's no debt.
I kind of equated, it's kind of like our own personal finances, you know, if you have, wanna put an addition on your house or a new roof, seven, eight thousand dollars, usually you'll pay that out of your same year paycheck. You save a little bit and then you try to take a chunk out of that savings account to do that major project to your house and, and start to build it back up again.
We don't, we don't take, we don't like to do that, take money from our, our reserve. But we're looking for some bright citizens that can maybe do us an alternative, so we'll give it a run of the premises, do that. No, but your point, your point is, is well made, I think, if it explained to you. Any further comments?
I understand now. Nobody liked it.
No, none was like it.
Better to borrow it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that my interest involved?
Yeah.
Okay, that's been one.
No motion, I made a motion.
Sometimes that was ten minutes ago.
I forgot.
That's why I was reminding you. And there was a second, wasn't there?
Yes.
A second? Off of the vote?
Vote aye.
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 So by this. You thought if you contacted it, that hurts. With the, uh, under new business, uh, property taxes on raise from request.
Yeah, that is from, uh, Central PA Transportation Authority, we also know them as JADA. It's for the new lot parcel on L Drive. Uh, they are a government agency and they are typically tax exempt as are we from school county and of course, our own taxes. Uh, so what they're requesting is that we formally recognize them as a tax exempt parcel and also asking that they be exempt from the twenty sixteen, uh, interim interstate tax and, and fire tax, which totals the two together for twenty sixteen at face amount totals sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
I think we know that. Attorney, do you have any comments to make on this? It's pretty straightforward.
It is straightforward. Municipalities don't tax on it.
And by the way, uh, I thought they did an exceptional job on that site. And they're not to look at, but they did a very professional job. Uh, the landscape is good and the, the stream buffer's there. Which obviously is in the wrong place, it should be down on East Forest Avenue, but they have to zone and so forth, so they couldn't, they adopt that and they think it's gonna work. So, that's fine. I feel we need a motion then to approve, uh, this tax of authorization request. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? Off of the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Next item, item number C under new business. Ridge Road Speeding Prophecy.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, but they're still required to ask. Um, if you look here, Ridge Road coming off of Fissels Church Road. Uh, this little piece right here, the stream is the dividing line between Cadore Township and Shrewsbury Township. Cadore Township is installing speed limit signs and, you know, they're required to put them, you know, a certain distance before it actually takes effect. So they would need to place a sign here, Shrewsbury Township, I told them I did not foresee that as being an issue, but I would get approval from the board. I don't know what the speed limit is, but they would install the sign, pay for it, their, their costs.
I think we should make a motion. I'll make a motion to support this so we have a record.
Second?
Any discussion? Off of the vote?
Aye.
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 The next item, the stop, reconfiguration.
Yeah, we, uh, we had, I have a copy if anyone wishes to see it, it's a lot of, a lot of nothing, but, uh, traffic study for the intersection, Ann had brought this up some time ago and, Mike the plane and I agreed that it really needed to be changed. Um, if you recall, the toesy roads up here, um, hayne roads down in this area, waiting. the Tozey Roads up here, Hayne Road's down in this area, White Oak comes down. This is the segment that goes into the county parks and now has a cul-de-sac. It's a dead end road. But at one point in time, that was a straight through road and the stop sign, and as it is today, is just right here. So, when you come down Sawmill, you have to stop. White Oak has the full right of way.
And just to be clear, my concern was that that stop sign had been stolen several times. So, in effect, there was no signage there at all.
Hanging in someone's college dorm room.
Somebody just didn't want to stop.
Yeah, well, that could be too.
At least three, I think, disappeared from there.
Yeah, I don't know what the number was.
All right.
What, what's proposed now with the study, again, this is the cul-de-sac, the dead end. There's two homes on this road. We're proposing that White Oak would have, would need to stop. Of course, when you're coming down this way, you would continue straight or make the left. If you're coming down from the Tozey down Sawmill, you would stop except for a right turn. Left turn, you would need to stop. So, that's what the proposed changes.
We have the approval from the county traffic engineer?
No, if you recall, they no longer do those. That's why CS Davidson did this one for us.
Don't say, do I recall? Who would be the authority in all of that?
I say that myself quite often.
Okay, well, okay. So, it seems to make sense.
What do you think, Ann?
My concern was that it was a liability because we didn't have any signage there.
Right.
And some of it, on one occasion at least, disappeared when we fixed that color. So, I don't know if that was a responsibility or if that was the thievery. So, that's what, I think that makes sense. I mean, that's, that goes with the track.
So, you're pleased?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Okay, that's, that's voted on. I'll make a motion to support this change to the stop signs.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now they have people, they have to go there, have some...
Right.
Two signs at a time.
Next item is stormwater, stormwater operation maintenance agreements.
Yeah, this is for old trail mini storage down here at Commerce Drive. They did some expansion. They had to put in stormwater improvements. Those have been completed and inspected by our zoning office of Keith Hines and he sent an email out, actually one of his employees, that everything's completed and we can release their bond, which is cash in the amount of twenty thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents. So, just need authorization to release that bond.
He's got a motion. Is that a fact?
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? Of the vote?
Vote aye.
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 And now come to the most exciting part of our meeting. I don't have many of you come just for this reason. Trash waivers.
Did you do what?
We gotta get out of here. Pen, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's sort of related.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pen waste rate, pen waste rate increase. It's due to the fact that the township waived their tipping fee up, up the incinerator.
Yeah, it's actually written in our contract with Pen Waste that if there's an increase in the tipping fee, that they can increase the rate to township customers. But it can only reflect what that tipping fee is. It's spelled out in language and they can't profit from it and so forth. So, the trash bills will go up every six months, uh, a dollar thirty-four every six months.
What period of time?
Um, well, at least through 2017. And that's if we extend our contract with Pen Waste. I believe our three years is up June thirtieth. Now, we do have the option, and we'll look into that later, but we do have the option to extend two more times, one year increments. But, uh, but this is at least for 2017. Um, and it was pointed out to me and I'll get them to correct that a little later, but they're saying it is effective January one of 2012, but it'll actually be 2017. So, now, I do not indicate on your agendas that you should vote on that, but we actually should because when I was reading the contract, it states that the township and Pen Waste need to mutually agree upon that increase.
So, listen, listen, by the thought matter, I think it was a great vote. Anybody else who would?
Now, this will just be like for, for a house, it's a dollar thirty-four increase one time in this discussion. Sound like it's going to happen every six months.
Every six months.
It's an additional dollar thirty-four per billing.
But we, we, all the incremental increases are just the first. Now, this will be from this point on. Unless, of course, they reduce it, but I don't foresee that happening.
Right.
Yeah, it's not just the one time. It will be for the remainder of the contract. And like I said, our contract expires with Pen Waste, June thirtieth of 2017.
But the dollar thirty-four, what's the full amount we'll be paying and have to, have to jump here?
Uh, says it will be a hundred and twenty-one dollars and four cents every six months.
Pay a hundred and nineteen something.
And those that use the tag a bag, which is the twenty-six orange bags, that will not increase.
That's fine, okay. Well, I don't think it's a much good choice. It sounds, doesn't sound unreasonable. So, can anybody make a motion to approve this rate increase?
Approved for 2017. Is that how we're doing it?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Vote aye.
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 Aye. If I can, while we're here, since the contract is going to be up soon, I've kind of watched these guys the last couple of weeks. I talked to Paul a little bit. He said, you know the contacts and all. But we'll have these larger trash cans all over the road. And I mean, literally out in the middle of the road.
Oh, the cans left out.
Yeah. So, what they do is you got one guy driving the truck and one guy who hauls it over and they clip a thing around it, pull it up and empty it. And he'll be looking toward the wall and just takes his hands and goes like that, every one, and pushes it. And wherever it goes, that's where it stays. Well, they're all on a, on a lawn or on a driveway where it starts. They should be required to put the, that's kind of dangerous.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they do it on all the major roads, but at least...
It's probably one person who's just very careless. That's been my experience. And then we have a, we have a, somebody that stops at Pen Waste periodically and...
Yeah, we, we have a rep that stops in every run and end of it.
Good. So, maybe, and, and these things on wheels, it takes the slightest little bit of wind to blow these things. So, you may be going halfway down the road to pick it up.
And you're the one very good to help with, with, with incline roads, yeah?
It's just dangerous because they're all over the road.
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
I should take a look. It's funny, the lights guy just, wherever it goes.
I just like, you need to tip better.
I was surprised with you.
That's all.
That's it.
If I, if I understand correctly, they get paid by the day.
Yeah, I'm sure they're trying to get hold of it.
Is important.
Yes.
Well, they do. I can give them credit. They run from one, one pickup to the next. I mean, they aren't moving.
They're in great shape. Okay.
What about a lot of extra recycling bins that we have out there? Are they, were they, were we charged for them or?
We were. Well, partial, it was a partial grant. We paid part of them as well, so...
Why do we have so many?
Well, reason, well, the reason we're going to hang on to these is if we get another contractor, you know, other than Pen Waste, you know, I think the fact that we already have recycled bins provided by the, the contractor, we're probably going to want to keep that in our contract because, you know, we told people they could do whatever they wanted with the old blue bins. Pen Waste didn't nothing back. We certainly didn't nothing back. So, we've just been hanging on to these. If someone has a need for one and they want one, we just give it to them now. We don't charge for it.
We have the space. It's not an issue.
Yeah, and there's a lot of the changes and we need those.
These are the, the blue ones.
The blue ones.
I was just curious because we have so many of them.
It was a good question.
Well, we had people, when we first switched to the large blue ones, we had some, I don't know how many today, but especially those that were like in townhouses or something, didn't want to go away from the smaller.
Yeah, I want to pause that for a second. We tried to buy as much excitement in these biddies as we can, yeah. I know it sounds just, we're almost done. Trash waivers.
Toys.
You want to get to the trash, don't you?
That's right.
You have a thing for trash? Now, I want to see if you're paying attention.
He knows that's at the bottom of the list. He's optimistic.
I already did this once. I'll do it again.
This again is, you know, our routine stormwater operation maintenance agreements. And this one is for a lot at the intersection of Tana, the Mount Airy Road, for a new residential building lot.
There's one small dead end road as part of the subdivision.
Correct.
And it does, and it, it does incorporate some stormwater management features?
Yes.
That's why stormwater's over proven.
Right. But they're going to maintain those.
And we have everything that's been approved by the staff and we're all ready to go with it?
Yes. You have the plans already deployed.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approved this O and M agreement for Tana Road measures.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Vote aye.
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 Five ayes. Okay, now, correspondence, you have that in your packet?
I'm going to skip the trash.
Opening is held. All right, trash waivers. Todd, we have two of them.
I do go out and inspect those properties and I do recommend that the board approves those requests.
I'll make the motion. We approve those requests.
I'll second it.
Vote aye.
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 Now, I think I'm, I'm solid grammar. I said, we're ready to move on to, I don't know, twelve, thirteen. Correspondents, you have that in your packet? Nothing major in there. Did anybody talk to, point out amongst correspondence?
No, just, just a point here. Art brought to my attention is Glen Rock Sewer's budget. They had a mathematical error and I'll make sure they're aware of that.
I think, uh, they just put it in there and see a lot of playing tennis with it. And of course it was. That was a big, a big difference still, all right?
We're sort of a hundred thousand.
Okay, closing public comment? Stan. Why doesn't Stan talk under reports?
Well, I have one for him. If I know he has one, I put it on the agenda. I failed to produce a report, so that's okay. Stan Walters, twenty-six X six Circle Drive, Shrewsbury Borough. Just to update you, elaborate a little bit on what Todd said. We have two volunteer radio groups in that are work within the township, the Southern Pennsylvania Communications Group, which is an amateur radio club, and York County React Team. Both of those organe, organizations are prepared as we go forward with the regional EMA to support the operations of our emergency operations center from when we activated it. In addition, the React Team in thanks for allowing them to meet in the EOC are also going to provide volunteer labor to complete the work to be done in the EOC. So, due to an unspecified technical problem at the end, at the end of last week, none of the EMA radios in the county have been working for the last week.
Wow. Serious.
If we would have had a major disaster, I don't know where the liability for not being able to communicate with anybody else. This did affect fire, police, EMS, but all the EMA radios were dysfunctional. So, tomorrow morning, the, uh, one of the radio technicians from nine oh one is coming to the Borough Building and we're part of all the radios from here, railroad is bringing in airs, Glen Rock hopefully, to get them all reprogrammed so they work again. So, we're going to take care of that.
So, it's, it's a electronic or a computer device?
I don't know where the problem is.
But it's the whole county, sir?
The entire county. So, every, the, when the radios are programmed, they're designated. This is a fire department radio. It's got certain channels that the fire department uses. So, one of the program instructors is EMA, gives us, for example, Peach Bottom. We can talk to the nuclear plants on EMA radio, okay? So, anyway, that's going to be fixed. And then the, as a result of the ongoing regionalization effort, Art and I are going to go to the Glen Rock Borough Council meeting on December twenty-first. And I have a presentation put together. They, they have questions about what their obligations are, so we're going to just try to give the sales pitch on, on doing it. Because they apparently have some reservations.
They don't understand. I mean, I, I talked to Art about it, but I think we're good handling it. Do you know, Art, you want someone else to go along?
No, we're good. I, I let Bill James, Bill at County, and, you know, he didn't really respond, but he thought he needed to be there either, so.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. Thanks for all your help with all of this. We're, we're good, Stan. All right. Let's see if I can get back on your table. Hold your bat. Closing public comment. I guess Stan called what under the, actually, you, you could get up and you can make a, your report out of the reports, but that's something you and Todd can. Any, any closing public comment? We have a good group here, Mike. Seeing no hands up.
I'll refer to your...
I haven't made it.
I saw you, I saw you had a list there. I thought, I'll see if you can get out of here.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'll second your motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.